Good morning, everyone. We call the Board of Supervisors into session for the August 8th, 2022. Board of Supervisors meeting. We'll start the meeting with the public comment. At this time, anyone may address the board on matters of which are on the agenda. Please go to the podium, state your name and home address. Individuals wishing to comment on a public hearing will be given the opportunity during that respective hearing. Individual remarks are limited to three minutes. Do we have anyone in chambers wishing to address the board? Saying no one in chambers, do we have anyone online that would like to address the board?
There is nobody indicating online.
Okay, we'll move to the approval of the minutes of the meeting of August 1st, 2022.
Motion to approve.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have consent items. There's three consent items. They're all wine permits or liquor licenses. We have a Class C native wine permit for Sunset Ridge Winery LLC. Class B native wine permit for Cypress Orchards and a five-day Class C liquor license for Traveling Tapster LLC. Anyone want to split those out, or we could do them all in one motion?
I will make a motion to approve consent items A, B, and C.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve all three permits. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. There are no procurement procedures, and we have no public hearings. Move to the approval of plats. We have a resolution to approve the final plat of Schmierbach Farm Plat number two.
Okay, good morning. The property is owned by Donald Schmidt and is located 0.75 miles north of the city of Cheryl along Circle Ridge Road with a total of 60.035 acres surveyed. The property is owned A1 agricultural. The purpose of the plat is to be able to sell the crop ground to the adjacent neighbor, Richard and Judy Brumaire. The survey creates two lots. Lot one has a total of 22.241 acres surveyed and will be sold to an adjacent neighbor and remain in current agricultural use. Lot two has a total of 37.794 acres surveyed and will remain in current ownership and agricultural use. Lot one will have access off Basswood Lane across Richard and Judy's, Judy Brumaire's property. Lot two will have access from an existing field entrance off Circle Ridge Road. There were no additions or corrections required for this plat. There are no mortgages on this property. Some of the signatures are over 60 days old, and they include the surveyor, which was May 26th, the engineer, June 6th, and the county assessor, June 2nd. This plat, this plat has been reviewed by Tammy as plat's officer and has all the required signatures. I respectfully recommend approval.
A question, Amy's.
Yeah.
These, uh, we're taking 60 acres and breaking it into two parcels that are under 40 acres each.
And the, the part that they're selling to the Brumaires, Brumaires own, wow, I don't even know total. It's like a couple hundred acres right next to it. They, their, their farms are right together.
Right, but this plat is going to create a parcel that's less than 40 acres. Both of these will be.
And because they're ag exempted, the Brumaires are ag exempt, we can do that.
And so one, one is, is joining ag exempt, and the other one is going to be 37 acres, and how is that ag exempt?
Well, so that Don Schmidt has acres right next to it also on the other side.
You're looking, you're looking at the picture.
No, I understand that. I'm just trying to.
Both farmers will end up with, will still have more farm, farm ground than those two lots.
Right. What's happening is that we're.
I, I see what you're saying. They're creating two smaller lots, but they're going with other larger farm, the one that's being sold.
Are they going to be replatted then to be part of that larger farm?
Uh, maybe in the future, because I know the, the Brumaire's son is planning on buying the whole farm.
When we, right.
Back section that Brumaires are purchasing, there would be no access to it other than through Brumaires.
Right, they have to go through their, their own land.
I would like to ask for a work session regarding plating A1, A2. I think there's some things that we just need to have. The, we need to have some zoning updates so that we're all on the same page. I don't dispute this. I'm just asking the why. Because when I'm on zoning meetings, I can't always follow the rationale from one case to the next case, although they build and then they say, well, you did this before. But if you don't understand why you're doing it the first time, then how do you, you're building a track record that isn't.
But, but this was not rezoned to A2. This is, this is all A1.
I understand.
Oh, okay.
There's no homes on either of these two.
Right, when there's no plans for that. It's all crop ground.
It follows.
Does it follow the plating ordinance?
And.
The.
Because they're ag exempt, yes.
If they were putting, trying to put a home on it.
Right, and that's not what they're doing at all.
Exactly. That's not. So, you know, obviously.
So it's basically that top part, they're just cutting off right where it would make us kind of a square on the bottom. The Brumaires are just buying that. I think they, I think they farm it right now. I think they rent it.
I believe they're renting the, the first parcel there. I think the last, well, that had been in tenure, but they may, they may be having, they may be farming that now too.
Chair, I'm not sure if Dave Schneider's on the phone, but a lot of times he can provide good context as well, if he would allow that.
Is Dave present?
Uh, yes, I am. I am here. This is Dave Schneider, Schneider Land Surveying, 906 First Street North, Farley, Iowa. Uh, yeah, this is just simply, uh, one farmer buying a sliver from another farmer. They would have liked to bought the whole thing. Don wasn't willing to sell and we basically followed an existing fence line on the south edge of that triangle, uh, um, so that, uh, the Brumaires could tie up what they were willing to sell.
Okay, thank you, Dave.
Yes, it would be helpful to me and probably alone, but to see, um, the plating ordinances laid out when one of these requests come in to attach the verification. Take a mo, a motion to approve the final plat, Schmierbach Farm, plat two.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the final plat of Schmierbach Farm, plat number two. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have a resolution to approve the final plat, Dalsing Place number four. Amy.
Okay, the property is owned by Megan Dalsing and is loaded, located 0.14 miles south of the city of Dubuque along Barrington Drive with a total of 7.12 acres surveyed. The property is owned R1 rural residential. The purpose of the plat is to adjust the lot lines of the existing two lots so that Megan can have more land on lot two. The survey creates two lots. Lot one has a total of 3.93 acres surveyed and will be sold. Lot two has a total of 3.19 acres surveyed with a home and will remain in current ownership and residential use. Lot one, we use an existing 20-foot wide access easement off of Barrington Drive. Lot two, we use an existing residential entrance off Barrington Drive. There were no additions or corrections required for this plat. The mortgage holder's acknowledgement is signed and attached. All of the signatures are current. This plat has been reviewed by Tammy as plat's officer and has all the required signatures. I respectfully recommend approval.
Is Dave on again? Did he, did he do this one?
He didn't.
No, he didn't actually do this one. Mike Weber did.
The, uh, guess I'm confused as to the size of the lot because the one's like 3.19 and the other one was like 3.9. But at the picture, it's not even remotely close. It just shows basically two lots unless I'm misreading something.
The, the total acres are listed kind of below where it says like lot one and lot two. The total acres are right below it there. So the northern lot's 3.93 and then that lot two is 3.19. So she's just basically putting more ground with her house and then selling the other lot.
And this is R1?
Yep, it's all residential, yeah.
Any questions, Jay or Anne?
None for me. It, uh, seems to meet all the requirements related to acreage and R1.
Any other question I had, the picture I was looking at didn't have that line all the way across between lot two and lot one. That's where it was somewhat.
Oh.
Can I use this as an opportunity to ask the auditor a question about the, are we working on the plating?
Our office is currently working on the solar ordinance, and then we'll be working on the plat.
There's no further questions. I'd entertain a motion or. There's no motion. This will go to approval.
I want to make sure everyone was satisfied.
I would say I was satisfied.
I'll make a motion to approve the final plat.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the final plat of Dalsing Place number four. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we move to action items. Have a resolution to approve the hiring of deputies assistants and clerks.
Worthy that we have our jail social worker hired. That's exciting. Take a motion to approve the resolution.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the hiring of deputies assistants and clerks. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we move to the resolution to approve the RCTP agreement with the city of Farley for the road resurfacing project. We have Russell here, if anybody needs context. Amount of 25,000 from the local transportation program funds between the county and the city, Farley.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the RCTP agreement with the city of Farley. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have, uh, resolution to approve temporary delayed travel restrictions of county roads on August 20th for the Second Annual Special Olympics Iowa's Side by Side UTV Benefit Ride. That runs from nine in the morning till five Saturday afternoon. We had it last year. I believe they have all the, the special use permit and everything satisfied for that. The estimated number of vehicles is 75. Any questions from anyone? Discussion points?
I will make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the temporary delayed travel restrictions of county roads on August 20th for the Second Annual Special Olympics Iowa's Side by Side UTV Benefit Ride. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have a resolution to approve the temporary delayed travel restrictions of county roads on September 10th, 2022 for the annual Cheryl Fest Parade. That just deals with the town of Cheryl.
Two hours. Motion to approve the resolution.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the temporary delayed travel restrictions of county roads on September 10th, 2022 for the annual Cheryl Fest. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have a resolution to approve, for the approval of distribution of historical society purchase of service awards. Ed, did you want to address that?
These are the amounts that the board indicated last week that you wanted to see brought forward for official formal action, so this represents that.
Okay.
And this is the entirety of the $20,000. This is one of the other segments of the total purchase of service.
Thank you. Any questions, Anne?
I will make a motion to approve the resolution for the historical society purchase of service awards.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the dis, distribution of historical society purchase of service awards. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have a resolution to approve certain fiscal year 2023 purchase of service projects. Ed.
Last week, Dubuque County Early Childhood was here and, uh, for a work session, and the board at the time indicated you wanted to see a resolution the following week today for the full $80,000. This is part of the $600,000 purchase of service program.
Question?
Motion to approve.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the resolution for the Dubuque County Early Childhood Purchase of Service Project. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have resolution to approve the fiscal year 2023 swap purchase of service project for Dubuque County Energy District.
And again, uh, the Dubuque County Energy District was here last week for a work session. Uh, at the conclusion, uh, the board requested that the amount $55,225 um, be funded, but added to their other award that you had made through the, what we were calling the ARPA program, which is now going to be funded through the swap purchase of service program, so uh, and wanted that to be on one contract, so, um, we'll be bringing back um, just one thing and for a total of 95,420, $90,225.
I'll make a motion to approve the Dubuque County Energy District Resolution.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the Dubuque County Energy District Resolution. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have a resolution to approve a letter of agreement between Dubuque County and Major League Baseball. This was, uh, out in a little later than normal. Just the agreement.
Same thing we did last year, I think.
Yeah, same as last year's.
Motion to approve the resolution.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have a resolution to approve the new Dubuque County Administrative Policy for Drug and Alcohol Testing.
And this was approved by the county attorney. This was previously worked on by, we, we received a memo last week from our HR staff. This was reviewed by professional consultants that we use in HR, so. That's, Russell, you're staying, you're in the room. You reviewed this as well. It directly impacts what you do. Can nod your head or you haven't seen it? The question is whether we want to take action based on what we were told or wait for a new HR person who can actually roll it out to assist department heads in understanding what this means. Right? I mean, it's an alcohol and drug policy. It talks about urine analysis and requirements to meet the DOT compliance. That's my only hesitation in adopting a new ordinance is we're doing it without an HR person and we're doing it with no ability to to roll it out or make a change or inform anyone or educate anybody. So why are we doing it now?
Well, they had been working on it. There had been a drug and alcohol policy. I believe there are just a few minor changes made to the policy, if I'm not mistaken.
And this was a policy that was sent out previously to department heads and elected officials to, uh, offer input on. Um, I'm certain Anthony, when he was here, would have taken a look at this as well. My opinion as the auditor would be that, uh, we could roll this out to the staff during our Tuesday department head meeting, elected officials meeting. Um, and if there are any in-depth questions, we could forward them to, uh, our interim gentleman who's helping us with HR. Uh, otherwise, I, I think this is probably a, a good thing to get into place and have in place and one less thing for our new HR director once we, uh, once we, uh, get that person to have to, uh, deal with.
I believe it, it even had gone to the unions.
Yeah, my understanding was that this was fully vetted by all.
Yeah.
All concerned parties.
That was my understanding also. It just never got brought up to us for the approval.
Brought the email chain though. Or we were on the email chain with the rest of the managers, elected officials. Uh, so I've, I've reviewed it and it, it seems, uh, like a good policy. And, uh, claim chapter and verse of related to the changes that were made, but, uh, it seems like a good thing to have in place. Auditor, you said you, there's a meeting this week, Tuesday, tomorrow?
We have a weekly elected official and department head meeting on Tuesdays at 10:00 AM.
Were you recommending that it be good if we pass this and said, here's, here's.
Yeah, I should have been saying if the board approved it today, we would then inform everybody that the new policy is in place and approved by the board.
Good opportunity for them to, uh, understand that it's approved and.
Right.
Great, that's. Like a rollout and a training opportunity, so make a motion to approve.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the new Dubuque County Administrative Policy for Drug and Alcohol Testing. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. We have no communications. Uh, we have appointments, open vacancies for information only. We were going to, uh, open up the applications for the Board of Health, correct? That could open up yet or?
There's been a press release, and I, I've actually seen this press release run in the Cascade Pioneer and the Lyersville commercial, so, um, it is out there working. I appreciate the auditor's office help and Roseanne's taking that over and leading on that, so that's great.
Uh, move the personnel requisitions. Motion to approve the personnel requisition for permanent full-time budget analysis.
Some questions of the budget director.
Stella?
Good morning.
Morning, Stella. Do you want to give us a background? This appears to be the same request as last time.
Yes, so, um, after some discussion last week, uh, you did come back around to that it would be a permanent full-time position uh, funded 100% through ARPA through 123126.
My question then is, I asked for some kind of budget line item that would show us how much we are removing from ARPA.
Yep.
And setting aside, or whatever words I'm asking you to, to assist me, educate me. How are we accounting for our administrative costs under ARPA?
Yes, so I did a calculation based on, um, this personnel requisition and also the single audit costs that I've gotten from the auditor's office, just an estimate of those for the next four years. And the recommended line item would be 550,000.
What are we doing to formally memorialize that so we don't inadvertently spend the funding?
Sure. I have it in my tracking spreadsheets. If you would like a resolution, I can certainly bring back a resolution that says that we're setting aside that amount. Excuse me, for administrative costs of the program.
Should we have consensus on the board here about that? What, what action do we think we need to take, my colleagues? Are we in agreement that that funding will be set aside from our ARPA request and reduced from the total amount that remains?
It was a personnel issue that I thought we should run through the budget, but consensus on the board to go through the ARPA for the four years. Have to have a resolution to approve that money from the ARP funds to that position for administration.
If you take the 550, you're 20 million, 19 point some million, it's less than 3%. Um, so I think that's a pretty modest amount. That's not our true total cost administration. That doesn't include time that you or Ed or others spend, uh, or the auditor staff.
Sure.
Spent existing costs, but, uh, those costs aren't increasing. So these would be increased costs or new costs, right?
Yes.
Way to look at it. Um, so yeah, it's, uh, you know, certainly this position, I would, uh, agree that 100% of the funding should come from ARPA. I agree with that point. The only issue I have from still last week is the temporary box. I would prefer that to be checked versus permanent, but the rest of it, I'm comfortable with.
But I guess what I, the position I take today is that I'm not going to move forward on the new budget analysis position unless I know how the ARPA funding is being accounted for with administrative time, that we do need to do that, the requests and what's remains of ARPA is significantly reduced. So our ability to be responsive and to our own taxpayers locally, we need to set aside some funding for county administrations program. It's illogical to me. We haven't done that. So I think it's time to take that formal action, especially as this position directly relates to that. I would like to see there be consensus and formal action on that first before we start hiring people based on kind of loose understanding of things.
Sure, I can certainly bring back a resolution next week showing, uh, a line item for 550,000, uh, budget estimate for administration.
Yeah, I think what we're looking at is so, so clearly 100% of this costs, and there's a range of salaries. We don't have that defined yet because we haven't hired the person.
Right.
And so you just take that salary times the end of ARPA, right?
Yep.
And that's that allocation. So then remaining balances is outside counsel and/or consultants?
It's, uh, mostly, uh, outside, uh, auditors running audit programs on our program.
Okay, but no, no internal costs.
No, the only internal cost would be for this position, so it was wages and benefits.
Yeah, and I think that would be good to identify and have those in summary. Um, I think this would be a big chunk of it.
Yes.
And, uh, you know, we clearly said we're going to use it for ARPA, um, but if, uh, the board wanted to also see the estimation of the, the other external audits, that's, I think that's fine. Eventually, we would get there. I'm going to bring that forward. I'm comfortable with that. Um, I plan to vote no on this anyway, because I was looking for the temporary box, so I'm in no hurry to approve this.
There are other costs that might, might be included if we wanted to open this up a little bit. Some of the trainings that you've attended have been based on ARPA reporting. Um, so I, I'm, this is open conversation about how do we want to account for costs that our county budget is absorbing when they actually directly relate to ARPA. Do Do we want to be broader in our interpretation rather than a specific employee and a specific cost from auditors?
Regarding the temporary box, and Stella may have looked into this already, I'm not entirely certain that when you're given a position that's four years in length, that you can check the temporary box. That it would, and I can dig into that a little bit further to get an answer, just to help you through that. I get the idea of why you would put temporary on there, but I believe if you were a full-time employee working.
I think it's our, it's our form and our box. We can probably check whatever one we wanted. And obviously it just says the duration of temporary assignment. You put the date on it. I think it's harm no foul. But if for some reason it runs into Iowa law of employment, I'd be happy to hear about that. My, my whole thing is that I believe the termination of this position should terminate with the funding we received from the federal government. That's, that's my lens. We had the discussion last week and I'm in the minority. So I'm, I'm understanding that. But I just see no benefit in, in finding this as a full-time position when we don't have, when the funding for this position, at least from my view, is tied to ARPA funding, which will expire.
Was this position budgeted?
Yes.
This previous, so that it is also budgeted as, as well.
The only issue I would have with the temporary is I think it's going to cut down on your pool of applicants. And at this stage of the game, finding qualified applicants is not easy. Finding that out in several areas, so.
I appreciate the auditor's note that maybe it's not possible to hire a temporary four-year person. That would have to be spelled out specifically in the terms of the contract or the service. It would become the service agreement rather than an employment contract. It becomes, that would have to maybe even be an independent contractor type position if you want to give it a beginning and an end date that's for certain.
As a person who manages and runs state and federal grants, I can tell you that that's very possible and happens all the time.
Correct.
Through NICC, that'd be my experience. And then through working with the government, happens quite often. So the federal government's not saying, hey, keep this position forever. I know we gave you money, but we want you to add to your payroll and we want you to have this be a drag on your, you know, general basic property tax levy. They're not saying that. So we, I think we clearly have the option. There's plenty of evidence that you have the option out there and it's, it's common practice as you probably have seen in your experience working with the county here, where you get funds from either the state or federal and a position is temporary and that might be for a series of years. That happens all the time.
Is it actually an employment posting or is it a request for proposals for an independent contractor? Maybe we need to rethink what it is we're trying to do here.
Probably could do either based upon guidelines and whoever's providing us the funds and they probably would allow for either.
I would agree with that. You could do either. It's been proposed as a, a hired position, not a contracted position.
Yeah. The one exemption, if you want to get deeper in the weeds on this, the one challenge you get is related to IPRs. So, you know, when you try to skirt the state law related to IPRs by going through a contractor and having them be full-time and then they act as employee, then you get into some employee issues. There are, there are some nuances related to my, my comments related that it happens. But if you want a temporary employee, we have that right to have temporary employees. And we have the right to hire and fire on an annual basis. But going back to what you said, I think to Russ McDon, I think it's a wonderful idea. If we wanted to identify our admin costs as we look forward and project those in a resolution, it would be most likely, likely an estimate and a projection, not an actual dollar amount. I think that would be good. You'd have it organized and memorialized in a resolution.
Do we actually have an agreed upon sum that remains from the 19, the 18.9 million dollars of ARPA funding? Do we have an agreed upon sum that the team that's been working on this, have you got a number?
The number I have that would include the admin costs would be 1.6 million.
1.6?
Yes.
1.6, I'm sorry.
1.6 million, yes.
So maybe that would be a good thing to have next week as well. It's kind of a layout of that to see the, the grouping of the expenditure. So we can all see that we've got a budget. You know, we've got a number. Then we're going to remove from that some administrative costs that those aside. So we're probably looking at about a million dollars left.
The 1.6 includes the admin costs. So that's already subtracting out the admin costs.
So we have 2.2 generally. And you're removing 550, yes. Again, this would be really good to have in some kind of paper form or memo form. So we have it to re, to refer back to as a moment in time.
I don't believe we're, we have 2.2 left in the ARP funds.
I believe that's the number I verified last week.
I thought we were down to like 1.9 with what we just did today.
Well, maybe we can, we can have staff work that up for next week.
I'll make a motion to table.
I will second then.
Have a motion to second to table. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have a motion to approve the personnel requisition for the permanent full-time assistant county engineer. Tabled last week.
I have the benefit of a phone call with our county engineer to understand the costs and things. My question has been answered. Russell, do you want to just make a brief comment? I don't know if you contacted other supervisors about your research for the, the wages, just so we're all together.
Good morning. Russell Weber, Dubuque County Engineer. Yes, last week it was tabled to analyze possible increase in wage in comparison to other counties and even the local private sector. And after a quick review last week, it was deemed that although slightly lower, just not worth the change. So what you see in front of you was the same as presented as last week, so.
Motion to approve the requisition.
Will second then.
Have a motion to second to approve the personnel requisition for the permanent full-time assistant county engineer. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, Russ. Moving to public comments. At this time, anyone may address the board on matters of which are of concern to that person and which are not agenda items. Please go to the podium, state your name and home address. Please be aware that the board is limited in their ability to respond to such inquiries. And Iowa code prohibits the board from deliberating or acting on items not appearing on the agenda. Individual remarks are limited to three minutes. Do we have anyone in chambers wishing to address the board? Saying no one in chambers, do we have anyone online wishing to address the board?
There is nobody indicating online.
Okay. Again, move into work session for discussion and direction on human resource director search.
Is someone going to lead that? I didn't know if someone was leading that or we're just supposed to go through this or what's happening?
Ed, Ed, that's fine. Good kickoff before football season.
This is Ed Rayburg again. So the, the board asked for a solicitation for applications in the community. Couple of weeks ago, that window closed. There were 10 applications. We've numbered them. So as anyone wants to talk to them, as we've shared those with you to not disclose who they are, many of them are local people. If you wanted to, we would encourage you to, to use those numbers. The, a team of staff, which includes Gary McAndrew, the interim human resource director, as well as the auditor, budget director, myself, and the other human resource staff helped to kind of pull that together and we reviewed those and while there, I think the consensus from the group was that while there were some, some good candidates in there, we wanted to bounce it back to the supervisors. If you wanted to just start a process of interviewing them or if you wanted to reopen, we didn't do. The process that was used was just posting the job, which is slightly different than doing an active search. So we did, an active search was not done. So we're bouncing it back to you. I think you've had an opportunity to look at those resumes. And we have communicated back to those people at the time that they applied. And then last week saying that, that we have received their materials and that we would be reviewing that and that the board would be begin their, their process of, of reviewing that and we would let them know and if they were being requested for a follow-up in the search process. So I, I guess we'll bounce that back to you. If there's something else you would like to see happen with that, that's fine. If you'd like to pull some people out to interview, we're happy to do whatever you ask. And I, I'm afraid I've been in communication with Gary McAndrews and he is not on this call. He had something come up, so I apologize. He's not available here.
My personal feeling was going through the applications that there were at least four that were qualified for the position. I feeling again, it's just me, that I believe those four should have an interview. I'd like to keep it as local as we can. I don't think it's anything that's out of any of their realms.
I think when our, when our group was meeting, we recognized that the local pool of talent exists, but perhaps not on the scale that the county requires now. And then we also recognized that we actually did have to go out of county to find our previous human resources director who, who was, I think by all accounts from our group, the standard that we are, that we have set as far as what we're looking for in, in potential candidates. And while there were individuals on this list that had pluses and bonuses, really to get to where we needed to be, we would have to combine two or three of them into one person to, to get what we really need for this county at this, at this junction.
Maybe first I want to thank the auditor and the team for organizing everything and going through the inner, going through the process of getting job posting, the applications and then organizing for us. So they arrive in a nice folder and we just get to collect easily and look through them. So I appreciate, I appreciate that work. I do share supervisor Potoff's, you know, general assessment. There are candidates that I would like to interview and go through that next stage. Not necessarily closing the door to others that would want to raise their hand and say, hey, I'd like to be interviewed as well. But I think the process that we've laid out and that we thought we could attempt to get candidates by posting. I think we have some worthy candidates to, to interview, not claiming that we would hire any one of those 10 today. But I, from my experience, I would like to at least have a, a second conversa, or a first conversation with three or four of those.
I think the, the group is happy to have been able to work on this. And we all individually have our feelings as for what we, what we would look for and what we would want in a human resources director. I tended to lean, I tended to lean heavily on Gary, who's done this for 30 plus years. And when he, when he informed us that there wasn't anybody on that list that he would have referred to us had he conducted the search, that holds a lot of weight for me. I'm not a professional HR recruiter and I don't think anybody in this room is. And then we have somebody who is doing that, giving us that brief assessment. And, and so, you know, from my perspective, a lot of weight has to be held in that opinion. Because frankly, if we did not have anybody apply, we would have been calling probably Gary to conduct the search for us.
Which causes me a little concern because naturally if it's my business, I'm going to suggest that you allow me to go out looking for somebody because I can make more money that way than if I hire somebody locally.
Oh, I think, I think, I think that's a fair, I think that's a fair point, but he's, he's demonstrated from the very beginning, a high, exceedingly high level of integrity.
Right.
And, and frankly, the willingness to want to run into the building when we needed him the most. And I thank supervisor Wickham for that, that recommendation because he's very much working, working out. We actually, as a team, did not get his input until we had all given ours. And his input aligned for the most part with what was, what we were assessing on our own. So that was sort of a, a validation of what our opinions were on the pool of candidates. So he was the last person brought to that conversation. So there was no upfront sort of swaying what people were looking at and what people were seeing.
Job description states that our next human resources director needs to have experience with labor negotiation. And that is a requirement. And while I value the time and all of the effort of the folks who've come forward and, and submitted their resume, that's wonderful. I'm glad they have the positions that they have. One of the reasons that the county saves money on legal fees is because we have had an HR director in our recent timeframe. Don Sherman had those skills and developed rapport with our labor unions. And that has allowed all those negotiations to go forward well with no need for outside legal counsel. And we have some experience today as a board, as we sit here about how expensive outside legal counsel gets. So I think it would be, it's a high priority for me to hire someone who's experienced in HR matters, but also has up-to-date experience with labor negotiations. That will save the county money in the long run. And I didn't see that in these candidates. So I actually agree with the recommendation of Gary McAndrews and the team that's looked at these applications. I've reviewed them as well and found that as a, a missing item for me that I would prefer that we develop that more robustly.
Another, another qualification or item that can't be discounted is experience in, in government, experience working for a county or a city. We are structured, as everybody is aware, in this room at least, very differently than your corporation or your nonprofit would be structured. You know, we're looking at a, bringing a person on who will report to three individuals. We're looking at a person who will report to in some way, shape or form, other elected officials and where there are gray areas over who handles what, who handles this and who handles that. The candidate we're looking for should be somebody who has experience, extensive experience in county or city government, particularly in the state of Iowa. So that the knowledge of the Iowa code is present. And again, there were a handful of applicants who had some limited experience, but nothing that rose to the level, at least in my opinion, of being able to, to really come in with their head up and their eyes open as to what they're walking into.
Did we highlight the government experience in the job description?
I will have to go back and.
So if we're changing
I believe.
priorities or focus, we want to make sure that the job description reflects that. But I, I think it's a courtesy to people who've applied if they are not beating our high priorities, top priorities, that we not interview them just as a courtesy, that they would be welcome to. No one's, we can keep their names in the pool, but I think we should go out and post this aggressively in the regional area for our HR director. That has been my position since the beginning.
As a paid search? Hiring a consultant, to Russ McDon, is that your, that's your path?
I think that's the next step. That's what I'm hearing from Gary McAndrews. That's what I'm hearing from a high-level individuals who've, who have made a recommendation. I also think we want we need the help as three supervisors.
Yeah. So I mean, I've seen this position quite often where there's two supervisors that say, here's where we want to go. And then we get the other side and we continue to chip away at that. So I get that. It's the minority component just staying here on that topic. Yeah, I think I acknowledge the, the expertise and I think I understand that. I just came to a different conclusion. Sounds like supervisor Potoff did as well. Sounds like supervisor Potoff did as well. I just don't see what the harm would be in, in interviewing good qualified, what I believe are good qualified candidates with experience. Not extensive government experience, we can talk about that, but they have some, some union negotiations amongst the candidates. And a few of them have ten plus years of experience. That seems pretty substantial and meets our requirements. And definitely not a courtesy interview, no. So I mean, I, I think it's people that you potentially could hire. And a few of these candidates with the experience also have ties to the community. Either they were formerly from here or they currently reside in our community. Like we've, we've done all the right steps so far. I don't know why we wouldn't go one more step. And interview them to see if they meet the group and the ultimate decision makers are here. We can talk about who the group would be to interview them. We've done that different ways, but. That, that's where I'm at. I, you know, I've thought about it. I've, I've heard it, you know, I've, you know, granted. You know, if you said, can I have twenty more candidates at no cost? I'd say, sure, let's do that. But if I look at the costs and the time to gain those additional candidates, I don't know if we're going to get the benefit.
That's my concern is the cost to. Get the candidates the board of health just went through this and they found a candidate and they're back down to nothing. Granted, the contract, there would be another search, but. I think we have qualified candidates here that we at least should give an interview to. I think it has, and they do have, a couple of them had. Union backgrounds where they've dealt with unions and contracts.
I would, I would, I would point out that the, I, I disagree with the idea that they have strong union experience. What we would need for the seven unions, I believe that we, that we work with. And that the, the price for admission for a, for recruitment of say between twenty and thirty thousand dollars. Is going to be spent in the first six months in legal fees if the HR director we hire does not have that high level extensive experience. We, we rely heavily on, we relied heavily on, on, on Ms. Sherman to get us through those union negotiations. And that saved us hundreds of thousands of dollars over the course of her employment here.
Right, but a lot of it has to do with the ability to talk to people. Communication between the unions and HR and everybody talking. So granted, yeah, maybe not extensive, but they have the experience and the resume saying they've worked. We at least owe them the interview. And if we don't feel it, it's up to what we need, then okay, we can go out for the search. I, I get that.
Thing to understand is, you know, the laws have changed. So short of the two unions in, in the sheriff's department. The only bargaining piece is left is wage. So it used to be a lot of details related to benefits and the whole contracts. Those are all gone. Those are no longer allowed to be bargained with. And so the, the role that previously we had with all of our unions. Has been changed significantly by the changes in the state law. Not that I agree with those, but that's what we're currently dealing with. The only ones that have the full union protection, from my understanding in our area. Are in the sheriff's departments. But that, that's another change of play that, you know, I think gives opening to another person in profession. And, you know, I worked with a lot of people in government over my twenty-five plus years. And ones that had good government experience did well. Ones that were new to government also did well. It's a different perspective. And so having experience just in government would only limit people just in government. I think that's, I think it's healthy to expand your pool into the private sector. As evidenced by two supervisors who were elected, right? You have extensive government service in, in working in the government and supervisor McDonnell and myself, as far as I understand. Have not been employed by the government. Same thing with our budget director. Don't believe she ever worked for a government before and seems to be doing very fine. So I think there's a lot of cases that, that give just the reasoning that, you know, we've got some candidates here that we can work with and talk to. At the end of the day, if, if, you know, after the interview process, we feel that we don't have a candidate that would be able to be up for the job, then. Yeah, I'm, I'm willing to make that decision.
I just would like to reiterate that the auditor, the budget director, the project coordinator, a professional HR. Search firm and two staff members recommended that we move in a different direction. Just like to get that on the record.
Well, I think your, your, your thought was you wanted to expand the pool and get, get it, I don't know if it was a hard recommendation to hire somebody, but if you're saying. Let's continue to look for more candidates. I'm open to that. I think you can do both move down the path of interviewing people and still have your basket open for others to say, hey, I'm interested in this position. You don't want to do that forever, but.
I don't think our group is, I don't think our group is looking at just putting it back online again and opening it up. That is a.
Could be more of a hiring than supervisor McDonald is actually making a hiring, hiring a recruiting agency.
Correct. We would be looking at somebody who does this for a living too.
And there's a lot of value in that. We've, 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 we've seen that in the past and I've used recruiting agencies multiple times. I think it was our idea and you, you were the one who championed it, say, let's just see what we got. And so we just disagree at this moment. It was kind of what we have.
But I would still push to say. I don't remember, but there was three or four that were qualified.
And we'll reach out then to supervisor for the.
We take those four and we spend an afternoon and we do the interviews and see what we have. Or we spend thirty, forty, fifty thousand going out on a search when all of a sudden we have the person right in our, the palm of our hand. Let's see what we got before we go spending all this money on a big search. Understand where I'm coming from?
Sure. We can, we can identify a process of interviewing and how that will work. We can look back at what we've done historically. We'll reach out to the three of you individually for your feedback on which candidates you would like to reach out to. And I would ask that at a minimum, the budget director, the project coordinator and myself are included in that, in that interview process.
Gary McAndrews to be included as well.
I don't, I don't know that Gary McAndrew, we can reach out to him and, and find that out. That gets into an area of, is he recruiting? Is he not recruiting for the, on behalf of the county?
We, we don't have expertise to do this. And so we've hired someone to give us that expert opinion. And that person, by the way, is working on a lot of things for us that we could never get through by ourselves. Things that are not in the public purview. So not having that person be in attendance as we try to interview these folks by ourselves, I think is a disservice to the county. Already given us his best opinion and now we're going to go alone. But I think he should be present. It could be helpful for the, the hourly wage that he's being paid as a consultant. I think it could be helpful to us. We're already going to go beyond what his best, his, his, his best advice is. Let's bring him with us to help us. I agree with you, but he can help us see the differences between the candidates. I'm not an HR expert.
I understand. I thought he was going to be on the interviews. We were going to ask him, right?
We, we could, we could ask him.
He wasn't included in your list. That's why I'm making a point to be sure that we do include him.
Well, normally this is part of his services and he offered up from day one. And we said, hey, no, we'd like you to help on a few other things that seem to be more urgent. And so we could certainly go back to him, but you know, he's, he's stated a, you know, here's my fee for doing this type of work. And we passed on that once. We certainly could ask him again if there'd be a change in his fee or if he's going to be on the normal hourly rate that he currently is. Yeah, don't get me wrong. I think he'd be wonderful in the interview and be happy to have him part of it. At the same time, I too believe I wouldn't underestimate the, the team that we put together to review and. Understand the qualifications of somebody coming on board here. We're not all babes in the woods, you know. Got a lot of experience, one at the county here and then two, just, you know, in other walks of life. So I'm, I'm. I'm very confident we could go through the interview process and do a very well job, very good job as a internal group. We also could use the other model. I think when, I can't remember what position it was, but we had people from the private sector also involved with the interview process. I believe either for the HR position or for the budget director's position as well. So we've done it a couple of different ways. When we had an interview with, you know, hiring a position at Sunnycrest for the director. We also had members of either the board or the private sector.
I think we need to get the private sector engaged in this until we find. A few candidates that we, again, we're looking at a pool that. Our top talent has said we should go beyond. We are not doing that. I could see, you know, consensus of the board is not to do that is to. See if we do have our HR director, our next hire from this pool of people.
But.
I don't have confidence that we do.
I respectfully decline your words and, and top people. I believe supervisor Potoff and I are, and you are. Those people as well that are really good at making decisions. And so, and that's why people elect us to make those decisions and have that competency. Not saying I'm an expert in everything, but. I think we've come a long way and, and I think pretty confident we can do a good job with this, with the team we have assembled. And the elected officials making the final decision without spending twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars. And if I'm wrong and we go through the process and it is clear to the. Body that makes his decisions, that we need to go back out again. We can do just that. It's just a little more time and money.
There's, the team you keep talking about supervisor Wickham is recommending that we move a different direction. So the.
Short of these two.
And I know I've been individually contacted by a candidate in this pool and have said, hey, I'm not doing that. I'm not talking to people. Are you, either of you fielding calls from candidates?
I did receive a call from one.
So I mean, that's a concern to me as well that, you know, we don't have that point person. That is that, we shouldn't be engaged in this. This is, this is an HR hire. And we all have to have the same information and have. One goal, which is the county goal, not prior relationships or current relationships. It should go to the point person. That point team has told us to move a different direction. So while I appreciate the kind words that you're giving to the team. It feels a little bit like a tin ear because that team has told us to go a different direction. You two wish to do this and there's, I'm not trying to persuade you. I'm trying to make sure we understand where we are. That we need to get those, we need to move forward apparently. So let's go.
I have no problem with moving forward. When you look at the applications and you have four applications that have experience. From like ten years to twenty-two years. I, I think it's only fair that you at least give them the opportunity to interview. Before we go spend twenty to fifty thousand searching for somebody that might not have any better qualifications than what we have right here. I just think we have a locals, we have some local applicants that have experience. We should at least give them the interview. If it doesn't work out, that's fine. We move to that direction. But I have a hard time spending that kind of money when we have.
In regards to spending that money, the proposal from Gary McAndrew was contingent upon us hiring somebody. No money would trans, no money would be paid if we did not hire somebody from his search. So the, the argument that we're going to pay twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars and then maybe not get somebody is not a thing. That's, that, that's not an argument. He won't bill us unless we hire somebody that he brings to us. And if we rejected all of his applicants, then we would pay nothing.
Oh, it's pretty obvious that. His recommendations kind of keep coming to the top here. So if he recommends one of his hires, then he gets paid. Which I'm sure he would recommend over anybody that's in the pool, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I can't, I can't fight cynicism. I can't fight cynicism with recruiters. The recruiters have a job. This is what they do. This is what we. As a society, we use recruiting agencies to find people that we don't know where to look or who to get. So, you know, we can have the argument about, is he going to do what's best or worst for the county? In this particular instance, we have a wonderful opportunity observing his track record for the last thirty days with his interactions with the county. And again, I will reiterate that they have been of the highest level of integrity. And we are taking his advice and we're taking his word on much higher level matters. He is, he is advising us on. Highest level of items that he, that a government can deal with. And we're taking those at face value and following his advice to the letter. So I guess I'm just confused as to why this is any different when he's offering the same advice. Or offering advice that we're, somehow this discounts him, but the other advice he's giving us to keep our operations running day to day, just do not.
I'm not discounting him at all. Why did we open it up for applications if we're not even going to look at them?
We did.
Basically, that's what you're doing. You're not even going to give them a chance to interview.
We actually looked at them. I, I'm not one to waste people's time, to be frank. I mean, I'll, I'm direct and I'm straightforward. If, if people apply and, and they're not qualified, we, we thank them for applying. We, we wish them well and we keep their application on file. But this idea that we're going to settle because we have to stick with somebody local, because that's what this feels like.
Never said we had to settle. They had said we needed to give them an interview to see where the, if they can do the job.
And, and in my experience, the, the resume, the cover letter and, and the CV is their opportunity to tell us if they're qualified and if they can do the job. And if, if that information says they are, then you have that conversation to see if they're a good fit. Because you know, walking in off the street that they're qualified for that job. And, 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 you know, the opinion of our group. Did not see that with these applicants.
Hasn't changed.
So if we, I, I don't know who's the three or four. If what we're doing is saying there might be something that comes up in the interview, then I want to interview everybody who applied. As I looked at it and I read the recommendations, I didn't find. That their, the credentials we have to date fits what I'm looking for. So if we're going to wait for the interview, then maybe they all need to be interviewed.
Some people, several of the applicants have absolutely no human resource experience. We want somebody with human resources experience.
And labor negotiations experience.
And labor negotiations. And there's at least two or three that had union negotiations under thing.
I read as well. That's what I read as well. I think we all read the same documents, just have a different view on those, which is fine and healthy. And I don't, you know, I don't hear no one other than this conversation. I hadn't heard from any other. Part of the team that said, hell no, throw them all away. So I think, you know, reasonable people can come to a different vantage point on, on first blush. What we're asking for is to, to have a second go around with the interviews with additional people. So that, that's where I'm at. I, I.
So I'll.
Strongly believe we need to go that, that direction. I believe supervisor Potoff does as well. So I would.
I understand where you're going, but let me just make a proposal as we move forward with the interviews. Could we agree to use Gary McAndrew as the point person to get us through the interview? So we don't have more of these types of conversations. I just, I'm not intending to disparage anybody who's applied. They all have great current positions and, and wish them all well. But I do think that it is helpful if there's someone going through this and leading us through this. With the agreed upon questions and the format. I mean, I, I think we would do everyone a service if we had Gary. Work on our behalf if, to, to even decide who we're going to interview, right? Let's get that in front of an expert who can build consensus about things that might be a little more sensitive. And they, we want to pick people in.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna ask if, if, if his contract for a search is contingent upon us hiring one of his people. Why would we not move forward with him to concurrently perform a search while we interview the candidates that the board wants to interview? If there's no cost to us and we're not losing anything, what would we have to lose by, by, uh, by, by following two paths at the same time? To double our chances. I mean, if I can get a contract from Mr. McAndrew that would state as such that there are no fees incurred unless we hire somebody he recommends. what would be the harm in doing that in addition?
There's no harm, just additional cost.
For whom?
County and we'd have to pay, we, obviously we'd have to fill the contract with the consulting term. If we hired their person, then that would be an additional cost versus the.
I would imagine if we're hiring his person, it's because they are wildly qualified and, and an asset to the county.
You still have to acknowledge the cost of saying, I'm just, that cost would be there, correct?
Yes, absolutely, but only if the board decided to choose that candidate.
Exactly, but the cost is still there.
Only if you incur it by voting for that candidate.
Exactly, we're agreeing on the same thing. So there is a cost, whereas right now, if we go through this process and select one of the individuals that we currently have, we have no additional costs. So.
Against the recommendation of your, your appointed team.
Sure, if you guys all want to die on this, you know.
As an elected official here in the View County, I'm as elected as the three of you are. When you ask for an opinion and we give an opinion.
I know, we could, yeah, and it's not the end of the world. I mean, we, you know, we, smart people can disagree every now and then. And so what I, what I really don't like is when you have two elected officials up here, consensus of the board. And I've seen this play multiple times. And then we just keep going down, you know, we're going to wear one of these guys down. And I've seen that so often. Boy, I just wish majority would, would, would stand and we just move forward with majority for once without going 18 rounds.
Supervisor Wickham, this is a work session and it's the only time we have to have conversation. And, and, and I'm sorry that you think I'm whittling you down. I'm not attempting to do that. I don't try to repeat myself. I try to make it have another point of conversation, another way to look at something, right? That's the point. And, and the people that will ultimately live with the individual that we hire are the elected officials who work in this building all of the time. The way we have split this job with different factions now, different parts of the job description is that this person's going to be doing the human side of it, the human relations, not the board work, not stuff for us individually, but the human relationship side. And that doesn't directly impact us the way it did before.
I've been here for six years, I understand, okay? I've been through a lot, I've seen a lot of people for six years, I've worked with two personnel directors, HR directors in my terms so far. I clearly understand the role. I believe I thoroughly understand the elected officials and department heads. But thank you for that detail. This is the 18th round, we're not in, we're not, this isn't a courtroom, okay? It's not defend, defend, defend.
It's just discussing it, Jay, just discussing.
How long are we going to discuss it, another hour or until we change our positions?
Just clarifying a few points.
Over and over and over, I mean, it's how long? I mean, really, you're the chair, do you want to do this another hour?
No, I don't. I think we do have consensus that we at least should pick supervisors, go through the list, pick your top four, whatever. Top three, I don't care. And at least give them an interview. If we decide to go out with Mr. McAndrews at that point, okay, when he brings somebody in, maybe one or two of the three that we interviewed would still be in the pool where they do the second round of interviews. Forward from there, definitely not shutting Mr. McAndrews out. I want him to be part of this because I, I trust his judgment very well. But on the other side, and said, you know, appreciate the applications and good luck to them, well, good luck. And you're not even going to give them an opportunity? That's not wishing them good luck, that's just saying tough luck. So I think the ones that are qualified, that have the human resources backgrounds are the ones that look at to at least have an interview with them to see where it lands. That's all I'm saying on the matter.
I'm comfortable with that process.
What questions does the team need answered to take next steps?
Uh, none at this time, I think we have what we need.
One other item I'd like to bring up to the board regarding DHS and different location. I have done a drawing for patient, I talked to Lori to make sure that the board is still on board with them moving to a new location. I would bring it up, it would be less square footage at a lower cost per square foot than what we're currently paying. So I didn't think that would be too much of an issue if we're saving money on it.
I'd like to see that be a work session, maybe that can be next week so we can flush out some more information.
We should have a little more by then, but we should just bring it on, make sure everybody was still on board. But patient that they're at now is going to be getting redone in the near future. So. Options for him to start with.
I had a, just a clerical matter, as we look at the calendar on August 22nd, so two weeks from now, I would like to be in a meeting in Manchester at noon, which means I'd need to leave at 11:00. Is it possible that we could have a light day so that that can happen? That's a public meeting with the, on the pipeline, I mean, Manchester's having it, there's a Board of Supervisors.
That's at noon, you said?
Yeah, so I'd need to leave by 11:00 AM to get to Manchester. So on November 22nd, or excuse me, August 22nd, can we look at that as being, if possible, a light schedule?
I'd have no issue with that. We're only a quarter after now, we spent quite a bit of time on the last issue, so I think I have quite a bit on the agenda and still get through it. Numerous times, but get that marked down, Kevin?
Thank you.
You want to do a work session then with DHS, you think?
Well, I think we need to so we can get some kind of consensus rather than just talking about it when it's not on the agenda. It's not on my agenda, I don't know if it got added.
No, it's not on your agenda, it was just under the general updates. Sessions and general updates and just updating you on that.
So let's have a work session on that issue, that's what I'd prefer to do.
I can get ahold of Lori and see what will work for her. What's next week look like, Kevin, or the week after?
I'll take a look and let you know. I think we're, we have good availability on the 15th. We can make whatever work.
Yeah, shouldn't be real long ones. Right? Anything further for the updates or? Jay, nothing?
Put updates on here, I don't see the update section.
Work session and general updates.
Work session and direction on Human Resources Director, oh, general updates, oh, I see.
We're still messing around with the format.
What's that?
We're still messing around with the format a little bit, it may change a little bit.
Sorry, I didn't see that. I wasn't understanding that to be general updates, like sharing time.
Trying to do is give us time to talk about things. There's nothing further?
I'll make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Have a motion in a second to adjourn, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. We stand adjourned, thank you, everyone.